Excuse me, everybody hear me? I'd like to call the Monday, May 12th meeting, the Commissioners to Order. And at this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Bill Lohan for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
If you would like, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we do come to you thankful for the rain you're giving us. We needed it, and we just pray that it would be coming as needed and not flooding. We ask that you be with us as commissioners, that we would do the right thing in your eyes, the right thing for our citizens. Just forgive us when we fail you, and let us all be about your business each and every day. These things I pray in Christ's name. Amen. Join me with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would now like to ask for approval or adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, no. Motion approved. Now, the first thing on our agenda is for a public comment, and let me get my paper. I have several signed up, but we're gonna have some hearings in a few minutes on some of the rezoning. And if you have anything to do with the rezoning, as I call your name out, just wait, and when we have the hearing, you will be given a chance to speak. The first person on my list is Mr. Paul Wilkins, 4684 Campground Road.
Yes, for item number-
You wanna, you wanna speak now or during the hearing?
Actually, I was here for item number eight.
Okay, go ahead then. Come on up and speak if you want to then.
I think actually I'm on that, tonight's agenda twice, so some might, the business, but actually, I was just gonna talk about the Hope for Settlement Fund. Is that a good time now to-
What now?
Item number eight on our agenda for tonight.
Oh, okay.
I can wait.
Why don't you just wait and we'll talk about that thing then?
Yeah, alright. No public here?
Not for number eight.
Okay.
Just since you're up here, you're going-
Well, you know, Gateway of Hope has served the community since 2018, and you, the county, has been very faithful in supporting us. And I just wanted to, first of all, just say thank you for all those years of your support, each individual one of you, and as a board. And as we move forward, I know, I hope, you're aware of there's a lot of great plans as we make that transition to CRCI. And that's why, one of the reasons why I'm here today, is to say thank you for your support, so I appreciate it.
Okay, next I have Terry Fields on Old Salisbury Road. Is that for the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Tom Whitley, I talked to him earlier, I think you're there for the hearing also?
That's right.
Pat Whitley? Are you here for the hearing also? Okay, and then Jill Dry. Okay, we'll just bring these back up then during the hearing tomorrow. Alright, next on our list is the 2425 audit, and the presenter is Mr. Toby Hinson, our Finance Director.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. General Statute 159-34 says, states that the auditor shall be selected and shall report directly to the governing board. So this evening, we'll look at the selection of the auditor. And then, the auditor will normally be here November or December to present the audit, and that's when they report to you all of the audit. For this year, I did kinda like what I did two years ago. I did some research on what auditors were, what firms were doing audits for counties, and really, there hasn't much changed. There's still two audit firms that do the majority of the counties here in North Carolina. And one of them is the firm that we're currently using, Thompson Price Scott &amp; Adams. The other is Martin Starnes and Associates, which we used them prior to 2017, when we first started using Thompsons. That's who we used before. Of the 97 audits, county audits that were submitted to the LGC for the 2024 audits, Martin, excuse me, Thompson Price Scott &amp; Adams, they performed 29, they did audits for 29 counties. Martin Starnes did audits for 23 counties, so you got two firms that do, that are doing little over half the audits for the counties in this state. Also, there was one other firm that's out of, they're actually out of Raleigh, that they did 12 counties in '24. And when I looked at '22, a couple of years ago, they did 10, so they're doing a couple more than what they used to do. And then there's a firm out of Charlotte, Cherry Beckett. I actually contacted them two years ago to see if they'd be interested in giving us a proposal. And they did respond, but they said they weren't interested in taking on any more clients at the time. And they're still doing 10 county audits, which is the same amount that they did two years ago. So really, nothing, really, that hadn't much changed as far as the audits that are, auditors that are available. I know I tend to wanna do, keep, I tend to wanna use ones that do several counties, because that shows me they're equipped to handle county audits. There's several that just do one or two audits for counties in the state. As of the 97 counties that were reported for, the audits that were reported for 2024, there were 19 different firms that performed the audits, and several of them, several of the firms just did maybe one county. And then there were a few that did two, and maybe a couple that did three counties. So, so that's kinda where we're at. I don't know if you may not remember when I was talking to you about it two years ago, when I did this, but not much has changed during that time. And Thompson, they, their price came in at 2.9 percent, with a 2.9 percent increase, or $1,800 increase, over what last, the 2024 audit was. And just an example, two years ago, I did get a price from Martin Starnes and Associates, and their price at that time was 75,000. And for the 25 audit, Thompson's will do it for 64,750. So, there is one firm that I would say we might wanna look at, maybe next year, maybe give them another year with experience. Doing county audits, but there's one out of Raleigh, they did the 12 audits for 2024. And, and that may be one, if they're continuing doing several county audits, we might, I might wanna get in, you know, give them a chance and see, you know, explore the options with them. But right now, there's really not that many options out there, unless we wanna try somebody that only does just a couple counties. So, my recommendation would be for the 25 audit to, to go with Thompson Price Scott &amp; Adams for the 25 audit. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the audit process itself, or the, this particular audit firm, if you have any.
Anybody have any questions with Toby?
Toby, who audits those firms? The state have somebody, or?
They, there's other firms out there that actually audit those firms. They're independent firms also that performs their audits. Now, the state has to approve them to do counties and town audits, but there's other firms that actually goes in and audits them.
Toby, do we know, out of our municipalities, do other municipalities within our county utilize the same firm?
I don't think any other towns do that's located here. I know City of Albemarle uses Martin Starnes and Associates, that's the other firm that does a lot of counties. City of Albemarle has been using them, but I don't think anybody else in this county uses Thompsons, Thompson Price Scott &amp; Adams.
Toby, what was the price of that audit last year? You remember?
It was 62,950, so it's an $1,800 increase over last year, or 2.9 percent.
I'm sure you all get along with the audit staff when they come in here. Any issues?
No, no really. Issues, I mean, they're very cordial. I know the first year I ever worked for the county, there, I don't even remember that firm's name, that was in 1999. They weren't very nice at all, and, and, but since then, the year after that, we started using Martin Starnes. And then, in 2017, we started using Thompsons, and both of them, the staffs are, are good. Sometimes you might not like how they do things, or you might, but that's just the nature of the audit. But, but they, but Thompson's has done well. They've gotten the audit finished by the deadlines. And where, you know, they would be able to be here in November or December. Now, one thing with the audit has changed. Now, the audit doesn't have to be submitted to the LGC until December 31st, which it was October 31st. But we're still shooting for October 31st. And so, hopefully, they can be here at one of the November meetings to present the audit to you all.
Toby, one last question. Where, where are they located?
They're in Whiteville.
Okay, thank you. Toby, is there anybody local that does this?
Not, excuse me, not for counties. For towns, there's a lot of different ones, I think, that do towns that may be nearer to here, but not counties. Of the list that I've got here that does counties, Cherry Beckett out of Charlotte's probably the closest one. And that's the one that I sent a proposal to them two years ago, and they, they, you know, the one that responded saying they, they couldn't really expand and do any more clients. And they, they normally, the list that they do, they, they normally serve bigger counties.
Anyone have anything else to ask Toby? I guess you need us to have an approval to-
Yes.
Take a vote for this?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the audit, financial work with Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company to perform the fiscal year 2425 audit engagement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda is the Central Illinois Region F Aging Advisory Committee appointment, and the presenter is Pamela Sullivan, the Senior Services Director. Hey Pamela.
Good evening, Chairman Harvey and fellow commissioners. I'm here tonight to present the application of Mr. William Smith for the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. Mr. Smith possesses a strong understanding of the needs and concerns of older adults in our county, and is well informed about the services available to them in our community. I'm confident that his appointment to this committee would provide significant support to both our department and our region. His term would begin July 1st, 2025, and if it's appointed for a two-year term, go till 2027. If there are no other questions regarding Mr. Smith's application, I would like to request his appointment to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee.
Anyone have any questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
I do have a comment.
Okay.
We need three more good recommendations.
We do.
And I know you can come up with-
I try so hard.
Three more.
I do. Nobody wants to drive to Charlotte.
Thank you, Pamela.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, alright, do I have a motion to, for Mr. William Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that William A. Smith be appointed to the Central Illinois Region F Aging Advisory Committee.
You got a motion? Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Hanley. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have the EDC Board Appointments, and the presenter is Ms. Elizabeth Underwood, EDC Director.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's good to be here with you tonight. Tonight, I'm here to talk with you about board appointments for the EDC Board. We have five members, that their terms will expire on May 31st, 2025. They are in District One, Philip Austin, District Two, Steve Bradley, District Three, Wes Morgan, District Four, Greg Underwood, and District Five, William Honeycutt. Additionally, Mr. Philip Burr has recently resigned his seat due to moving out of District Two. Therefore, a replacement will be needed to appoint to serve the remainder of his term that expires on May 31st of 2026. The volunteer applications are included in your packets. District Three, Wes Morgan, has elected not to reapply this year, and the application in District Three will be Mr. Wayne Sasser. In addition, the applicant that would like to replace Mr. Philip Burr is Mr. Terry Lynn Claude Felter. I believe you have these in your packet, if you wouldn't mind taking a look.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself as I'm related to one of these nominees.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're recused.
Thank you very much.
He's requesting recusal for the District, is it District Three, the one that Wayne Sasser's applied for? Yes.
We do them together.
Okay, let's just do a, a motion for District Three first.
I'll make a motion Wayne Sasser be named as District Three representative.
Motion for Mr. Wayne Sasser for District Three, do a second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor of District Three with Mr. Wayne Sasser, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0, or 6-0, excuse me. Then, someone make a motion for the remaining, or take them all separate? Let's do, let's do all of them together then. Make a motion for, I guess, reinstatement of one in addition of one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Philip Austin, District One, Steve Bradley, District Two, Greg Underwood, District Four, William Honeycutt, District Five, and to fulfill the term of, of-
Wes Morgan?
Philip Burr.
No.
Philip Burr.
Philip Burr, I request that we, I'll put the name of, then Claude Felter. He lives in that district.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, everybody know where we're going on that? Alright, all in favor of those, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Board of Adjustment Appointments, and the presenter is Ms. Bailey Klein, Planning Director. They got your name right this time.
Yeah, it's different this time. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. If you'll give me one moment, I'm gonna get my slideshow pulled up for you all. Okay. Like I said, thank you for having me. The first item before you is a Board of Adjustment Appointment. The Stanley County Board of Adjustment consists of seven members with two alternates, appointed by you all, and staggered three-year terms. Kevin May Jr. was appointed to the Board of Adjustment in March of 2025, but he recently informed us that he will no longer be able to accept the position on the Board of Adjustment due to work obligations. Therefore, someone will need to be appointed to finish out this term, which expires in July of 2028. There are currently three volunteer applications. Kevin Brickman, who previously served on both the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment, Judy Nelms, who has served as an alternate member on the Board of Adjustment for three years. Her alternate term will be expiring in June of 2025, and Mrs. Nelms has been consistent in filling in for absent board members, and very willing to participate in discussion. And then lastly, there's Michelle Javitas, who has not previously served on any boards, but is a resident of Norwood. All applications of volunteers willing to serve on this board are included in your packet. As a board, you're able to fill this position or table this item until additional applications are received. Please appoint one member to the Board of Adjustment to finish out this expiring three-year term in June of 2028. And just a quick overview of who currently serves on the board, Cynthia Fish is the chair, and then there's Richard Cosgrove, Michael Fleming, Billy Franklin Lee, Brenda Farmer, Michael Eford, Judy Nelms, obviously, she's an alternate, and then Deveron Fur is also an alternate. And then applicants for the permanent position are Judy Nelms, Kevin Brickman, and Ms. Michelle Javitas.
Okay.
Same as the application, request the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Judy Nelms for this position.
Motion, can you, can you, do that second?
I'll second.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you so much. Yes, I am. I'll be right back.
ER 2502, conditional rezoning request for Mark Padgett?
Yes, sir. Okay, let's see. Let me get my bearings right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the second item that I have before you is a conditional rezoning request by Mark Padgett for an approximately 0.86 acre tract in order to accommodate for a diesel shop and a single-family dwelling that's located at 33048 Old Salisbury Road in Albemarle. The Stanley County Planning Board heard a request by Mark Padgett for a conditional rezoning on the approximately 0.86 acre tract to be rezoned from County R20 to a conditional zoning district. There is currently a single-family dwelling on the property that Mr. Padgett is renting out, and also, there's a building behind the home that Mr. Padgett is currently using as a diesel shop. The building was permitted as a residential accessory building in 2022. Mr. Padgett went and met with staff in early March regarding the current use of the property. Due to the diesel shop being in a residential zoning district, it was a non-conforming use. Mr. Padgett has been operating the diesel shop from this location, and there were community members in both opposition and also in support of Mr. Padgett. Mr. Padgett did speak to the board in regards to this request. There were concerns raised over how Mr. Padgett properly disposes of any diesel fuel or runoff. Mr. Padgett did indicate that he does have a company that comes and picks up the tanks that the liquid runoff is placed in. Mr. Padgett further explained that the trucks that are currently sitting there are either waiting to be picked up, or he is trying to get a title for ownership. Mr. Padgett will have to comply with building inspections, which will require him to place a bathroom and an exhaust system in this building. This does mean that he will have to comply with all environmental health standards as well, and I'll elaborate on that a little more. Mr. Padgett did agree to all the conditions that staff created. There will be only one employee, which will be Mr. Padgett at the business, and it will run between the hours of eight and five during the week, or by appointment on the weekends. This property does line a secondary growth area per the 2040 Stanley County Land Use Plan. It is approximately half a mile from the city limits of Albemarle. There was a sign posted at the property, and all neighbors that join property lines and are within 100 feet were notified of this request. With that being said- Um, with that being said, I'll go ahead and I will talk about the conditions for the property, um, and they should be shared on your screens as well. I'm sorry that it's, it's tiny, but I had to fit it all in one. So, the only allowed use for the property will be the single-family dwelling and the diesel shop. There will be no more than five trucks allowed at the shop at one time. There will be an eight-foot fence along adjoining property lines, as well as between the business and the single-family dwelling on the property. The diesel shop will remain no larger than 1,500 square feet. There will be only one entrance slash exit located at 33048 Old Salisbury to serve both the single-family dwelling and the diesel shop. The diesel shop will remain 50 feet from the rear property line, 250 feet from the front property line, 10 feet from the north side property line, and 50 feet from the south side property line. Obviously, the numbers are staggered like this because the building is already in place. There will be only one employee of the diesel shop, which will be Mr. Paget. One 10-square-foot freestanding unilluminated sign shall be permitted for the diesel shop and remain five feet from the property line. Hours of operation for the diesel shop will be eight to five, Monday through Friday, or by appointment on the weekend. There will be no additional buildings placed on the property to be used for the business operation. That one's obviously highlighted in red, um, and I'll get to this one, that one, in one second. Any accessory structure placed on the property for the single-family dwelling must maintain 10-foot setbacks from side and rear property lines. No accessory structures will be placed in front of the dwelling. So, the reason that the one that says there will be no additional buildings placed on the property to be used for the business is highlighted in red is because I spoke with Mr. Paget this afternoon, and obviously, the building, since he will have to put a bathroom at that facility, at the, um, at the shop, he's gonna have to accommodate for a septic system as well, um, and since the building is existing, he's not sure that he'll be able to fit the bathroom inside of the building. Um, he did speak with building inspections. Chris Moon told him that he could have the, um, bathroom as a separate building at that property. Um, so, since I spoke with him on the phone, I told him that we would add that in here if it is, um, approved. Well, he would ask that that condition be amended to say what is below, which says the only additional building that will be placed in relation to the business will be the bathroom, and the bathroom will meet 10-foot setbacks from the side and rear property lines. Um, so that's the reason that that one is highlighted in red. This is a zoned view of the property. So, the orange area, um, along Old Salisbury Corridor, the Old Salisbury Corridor, a little bit of fire line, and then man, all this is R20, um, R20 Residential. And then, obviously, all of the green area is what is on County RA. And then, the, this outline in the green is where Mr. Paget's property currently sits. Um, Mr. Paget's, um, stepfather, I believe, owns this property, and then Mr. Paget lives at this property, um, uh, one parcel back. This is an aerial view of the property. This, um, where my cursor is at, is the single-family home that's placed there. That's what's being currently used as a rental property, that Mr., or rental home that Mr. Paget owns. Um, and then this is the shop in question. I did ride by there, um, mid-afternoon sometime, just to put my eyes on it. Um, I didn't see any trucks parked along the driveway, um, and there was a fence, uh, the fence, um, for this has already been placed by Mr. Paget, and there's a picture in that I'll show you also. Um, and like I said, Mr. Paget lives in this area back here. This is a, just a more zoomed-out version that you can see. This yellow line that you see, this thicker yellow line that you see, that's the Sea of Albemarle city limits, um, and then, obviously, Mr. Paget's parcel's up here. It's about a half a mile, as the crow flies. That's not an exact measurement, but just give or take a little, um, that's approximately the distance from the city limits. This is, this was taken from just Google Maps. This isn't a picture that I took. Obviously, this, I think this was in '23, I believe, if I remember correctly. Um, but this is the shop. I just wanted to, you to put your eyes on that kind of thing and be able to see. So, obviously, this is the house. This is the shop at the, um, and it still looks this way, but there is a fence, um, right here that you, that kind of covers your, your view of it. Um, it's obviously in relation to the conditions that were put forth. So, there is a fence that he's put on the front side. And here it is, the fence. So, here's the fence, um, that he's currently put up, obviously, um, to try to obstruct the view from Old Salisbury. Um, it currently does look this way also, when I read about earlier, but I just wanted for you all to be able to see, um, what that looks like. And there's a couple other things that I just wanted to briefly touch on, um, that have been points of concern for the, um, community and that were also points of, or topics at the, uh, Planning Board Meeting as well. As far as, um, I was asked about the inspection part of it, as far as if this were to be approved, is there a set timeline that staff, you know, goes out and inspects that all these conditions are met? So, what I will say to that is that in the conditional zoning ordinance, there's not a specific timeframe that, you know, we have to inspect any type of conditional rezoning. And I say that because, obviously, Mr. Paget will have to add a bathroom, um, and he'll also have to put an exhaust system, and so, which triggers, obviously, getting permits. And so, within that first six months, he'll have to have his permits, um, first inspection completed. And so, by that time, the main thing for, um, obviously, the existing conditions, not necessarily anything will have to change for the property itself besides the fence and the bathroom and the exhaust. So, at that time of that six-month inspection period, staff will, obviously, inspect that as well. And so, I know that that was a concern at that time, so I just wanted to elaborate on that a little bit more. Um, another thing that was also an issue, um, at the Planning Board Meeting was the truck storage, and I've spoken with Mr. Paget about this. Um, obviously, as I stated, he lives on that backside parcel, and there was, um, a concern about him storing trucks there that are in relation to the business. Um, and I did relay this with him, is that any, any truck storage that is being used in relation to the business is not in compliance. If he's storing personal vehicles for personal use, that's different. But if he's using it as far as like a storage ground to move them in and out, that's different. Um, so I did relay that to him, and then also, another thing I wanted to touch on is, um, I was asked about, he was parking them under the power line, um, and that isn't necessarily a zoning issue, that's a, a power company issue. We don't regulate setbacks from power lines if he's parking things under them or near them. Um, we just do setbacks from permanent structures, and so, that would not fall under us. But obviously, he will need to meet those guidelines as well, as far as how far he has to be, um, from those power lines. And then, the last thing that I did want to touch on, I believe this is the last thing, is at that meeting, also, Mr. Fields, um, lives beside of him. Uh, let me get closer view for you all. I believe this is Mr. Fields. Um, and at the Planning Board Meeting, he made comment that he didn't want a fence between Mr., him and Mr. Paget. He preferred not to have a fence between the two of them on this property line. Um, and so, obviously, if this is approved, you all have the ability to amend that fence condition to allow for there not to be a fence between Mr. Paget and Mr. Fields, um, if you choose to do so. So, um, and typically, with that, um, just a rule of thumb for us and what's in the ordinance is that if somebody does rezon a property to a commercial use, um, but they adjoin residential properties, if the neighboring parcel is fine with their request to not have any sort of buffering, then that's fine, as long as we get it in writing. But obviously, with this being conditional, um, we want to have it done in the conditions. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that you all may have, um, for me, and I think that that is all that I have.
I got a question. Bailey, can you bring that map back up that you just had?
This one? Which one was that? I can't remember.
Right there.
This one?
Yeah, the five trucks.
Uh-huh.
There are no more than five trucks allowed at the shop at one time. It's gotta be on that property inside the green, behind the building.
Behind the fence.
Behind the fence.
Yep.
And somebody said there was, the power line, is that?
It's back here.
Okay.
On his, um, where his home is.
So, he has to, all the trucks, has to be parked on that property and nowhere else?
That's right.
Okay.
In relation to the business. Yes.
Thank you.
And that's including on the power line?
Yes, if it's in relation to the business.
What, question, Bailey. Uh, the property, if you're looking from Salisbury-
Mm-hmm.
-road up-
Mm-hmm.
-to the right, who owns that property?
This, where my cursor is? This one? Um, it's a holdings company, I believe. I'm not sure, there's not an individual name on it. Um, but I know, at the time that I met with Mr. Paget, I believe he said that whoever is the owner of the parcel allowed for him to park trucks there at one time. Obviously, with this, if this is approved, he would, he would not be allowed to do that. But I'm not sure, as far as the individual who owns it, I'm not sure. It's just in a holdings company.
Anyone else got anything?
I was gonna ask, I probably need to ask him. I was, I had to take, I, I changed my oil from more than one vehicle, and I went to the convenience center to, for them to take care of it, and I had let it stay out in the rain. So, you know, the bucket got fuller than what it was. But while I was up there, I asked him, would it be possible for someone that, say, that, you know, that was doing like the commercial business to, to be able to, uh, bring their oil there? And the gentleman said, no, that's, uh, that's not agreeable. And, uh, I know that's a concern, and I know that there's companies, and I know you said you had a company that comes out and picks up the oil and the fluids, uh, it's hard to change a radiator and not dump out the antifreeze and, and the oil, transmission oil. So, uh, that was, on this sheet of, of the stipulations, would it be possible to add something to this sheet?
Yes.
If they were agreeable, if it's agreeable to you-
Yes.
If it's agreeable to you, uh, that the company that picks up the fluids, uh, keeps a record, some type of record, and most time they do. And I know, I know, you, we, we can wait until you come up here. I, I know you, you probably would. And, uh, and the other thing that some of the commissioners were asking, it said that, and, and you already a- answered that, uh, no parking of vehicles off the property of the shop. And you said, no, that's not, that's not good. I'll wait until you come up. I know you're gonna probably speak.
Are we ready to, uh, open it up for the hearing?
I guess.
And now open, uh, the hearing for, uh, CR 2502 Re- Re-conditional Zoning Request. And the first person I have on the list to speak is Terry Fields. Would you like to come up and speak? Hey, Mr. Fields.
Yeah, I, I live next door. I live in that, in that, where the red pickup is there. That's, uh, and I have never had a, a problem with noise or nothing like that, so it, it never bothers, bothered me and my wife either once, so.
You're, you're good with, uh, the situation?
Oh, yeah, it, it's fine with me.
All right. If that's all you got, we'll-
Okay.
-get to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Next one I have is, uh, Mr. Tom Whitley. Would you like to come and speak?
Good evening.
Hey, Mr. Whitley.
Hey, I'm Tom Whitley. I've, uh, spoke at the Planning Board Meeting and expressed a couple concerns about the, um, conditions of the application. So, what those are was, first, the application states that only five trucks will be parked at the shop at one time. And, but in fact, there's, there's been quite a few more than that, that I've observed. And my concern is the, as far as the, uh, uh, parking and storage of the trucks, is, if you could put that map back up, that's, can somebody put the, yeah? So, the property above Mr. Paget's, uh, shop, uh, the, the, the eight acres where the power line is, is actually the far piece on the right, and a piece of that is missing. And that's, uh, I guess his, his business, it got, it's grown and got pretty busy and ran out of space, so I've seen some trucks stored up there, and that's my concern because that joins my property. So, my concern with that is the business spreading up there, and there's, um, there's a piece of the picture missing because on up above there where the power line is, there's a sawmill operation with several buildings, and there's a mobile home up there, so there's a lot of stuff up there now. So, that's kind of my concern about if, you know, I don't really want to see it grow up, you know, next to me. So, you know, I would like to see, uh, the condition on how many trucks can be stored, uh, modified, you know, to say that trucks won't be stored on other properties, it's not included in the rezoning request. I think y'all, I think that was just mentioned a minute ago. Uh, the second thing was that there's no mention in the application of how fluids, engine oil, gear oil, transmission fluid, antifreeze will be handled, stored and disposed of to prevent spillage and contamination to the soil and groundwater. And the concern there is, everybody around there is on well water. And I know Mr. Paget last time pointed out he's on well water too, so he'd be a concern, understandably. But I, I think there ought to be something in the conditions that state how he's gonna handle all those fluids and how he's gonna dispose of them, you know, his method for handling those and disposing them where he won't contaminate the groundwater, and some records kept of when all this stuff is disposed of, how and when. And then, the only other comment I had was, I read the county's 2040 Land Use Plan, and I'd just like to, I'm sure you all will consider whether, you know, putting a business like this in a, primarily a residential rural community fits that plan. Because one of the key things I read in that plan was, you know, the idea of maintaining the rural character of the county, so. But that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, I have, uh, Pat Whitley, Fireline Road.
Good evening.
Hey, Mr. Whitley. Thank you.
How are y'all? I live right behind that power line. It joins my property. I live right beside Tommy. We're cousins. Um, I feel about the same way. Those trucks, uh, I worry that the groundwater, if there was anything leaking out of them, could get in the groundwater or anything like that, uh, catch on fire. We had a bad fire back in Spring. It didn't come from that, but it come, it was another place, but it come across there. And I worry about those trucks, anything like that happening. And like I say, we're all on well water. And, you know, I don't, I don't see how we can park under a power line. So, that's really all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat Whitley. And next I have, uh, Jill Drive from 3173 Old Salisbury Road.
Chairman Barbie and fellow commissioners, thank you. My name is Jill Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I've lived on old Old Salisbury Road for like over 60 years. I know you find that hard to believe I'm that old. Anyway, it's been my home most, for almost all of my life. Uh, and the R20 Single Family Residential District Regulations are intended to ensure opportunity for primarily residential development protected from disruptive, commercial, or agricultural influences. And, um, the conditional rezoning request is in direct violation of Section 620.2, which states the approval of a conditional zoning district is required as a prerequisite to any use or development, and that concerns me. And as Bailey said, the building that was built, was built under a permit for a, um, residential accessory building. It was not built for a business, and as evidenced by the fact that he's got to go back now and make some, um, additions and corrections to things to make it appropriate for a business as it was intended. And my concern is this will become the standard for our county. I don't want people thinking that, that the county is going to allow businesses to go in, build in areas that it's not a zone for, and then, after the business is built, then- in areas that it's not a zone for, and then after the business is built, then come back and ask for permission to have that business in that zoning area. That does concern me. And also worried about accountability. There's a long list of conditions with this property, and those would need to be met if the rezoning request is approved. There's no, I thought there was, I was told there was no timeline per se for that, and I understand that each situation is different, and you have to allow for those changes and differences. But there's not a specific timeline that says by 12 months from now, you know, if this doesn't happen, what does happen? And I'm pretty sure I have understood correctly that once this, if this reconditioning rezoning was approved, that it was not reversible, that it's, once it's done, it's done. So if conditions aren't met, what can be done? Because there are, there are a lot of things to do, and I'm sure they're very expensive. And once conditions are met, then if conditions do not continue to be met, then it's a complaint-driven process. Neighbors have to complain to the, you know, the planning and zoning office and wait for something to happen. In my experience with a somewhat similar situation several years ago with a special use permit on Old Salisbury about a half mile away, that was a difficult thing. Once the approval was given, it seemed to be very difficult to get those conditions met, and there was kind of no going back. This is not an easy thing to come up here and talk to you about because we're a neighborhood, and you don't want to see neighbors against neighbors. And I just am concerned about the future of the area where I live because it seems to, this is the second time something like this has come up. And I just am concerned that that's going to set the standard for what we allow in Stanley County. But thank you for letting me voice my concerns tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Drive. Is anyone else here to speak for or against? Come forward and state your name and address.
And I'm, 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 I'm Nathan. And I'm Russell. I live at 33064. I'm Old Salisbury. And other than, 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 than Terry's house of the houses that are not owned by Bob, 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 Mark, I am the next, I'm, 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 I'm closest house. And I would like to state that it's never been a problem, an issue, the noise, appearance, everything has, 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 has been, I'm, 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 I'm good. And, you know, no, no, hate, hate, hate to try us to comply with, 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 whatever is asked of him. So I'd like to say that, that I'm good, and I'm with him having it there. And I'm, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak for or against? Let the gentleman right here, the blue shirt, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Edward Ashmore. I live at 33049, right across the street. If you look at the map, I'm the one with the red garage right there, right across the street. There's been people bringing up the fact of contaminated wells. Well, I'm going to let you know, the two well, the two houses, if you put up the map, the two houses where Mr. Field lives and the rental house, both of theirs are being fed by Mr. Page's well from up top. Because years ago, there was two people that lived in those houses that worked at the mill and brought chemicals, and they already contaminated those wells. Those wells, anything from the top of that property line down is contaminated. It's actually being fed by Mr. Page's well from the house up above, and each year, the water system comes out. I had to have a new well put into my house, and they have to test my, my well to make sure it's still good because of the previous contamination that's already been done. So I know Mr. Page, I've helped him and did other work for them. I do know that he goes through and makes sure that all the, all the containers and that for the oil, it's on the backside of the building. He does have someone that comes in and picks it up and disposes of it for him. I know that he makes sure that none is done out on the gravel or outside. So I don't know where the big issue is, and everyone's saying that there's all this issue of contamination. These houses already are contaminated. They have to be checked every year to see if the contamination has even gone away enough. I know because I had to have a new well put in, and they have to test mine every year just to make sure it doesn't come down from their places and to my place. I have no issues with Mr. Page's business being there. Everybody needs to have a chance of making a living, and it sounds like some people don't like other people having a living. You guys have a blessed night, and that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Ashmore. If there was someone else, gentleman in the back, please state your name and address.
My name's Landon Airey. I live at 33231 Cortland Drive off of Mann Road. And I work at Crook Murder Company. So every morning I go to Crook, I look at this place. And Marquez went out of his way and stopped doing what he had to do as far as keeping his customers happy, to get this fence up and doing everything that y'all have asked in the meantime of this going on. I don't see an issue with anything that he's doing. I mean, I'm a small business person, and, you know, Brandon King and the rest of them out here that's got these small businesses, I can, you know, I represent them any given day. Because, you know, it's not a multi-million dollar company that you can just go out here and spend all this money and make it right, you know? So for him to go out here and stop doing what he's doing and spending the little bit of money that he does have to, you know, get it to where he needs it to have it, I think he's doing a well, well enough job to show that he's trying to do what y'all are asking of him. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. I'd like to hear if there was someone else that wanted to speak, if that's right? You want a gentleman there? Please state your name and address.
I'm Mark Page at 33042 Old Salisbury.
And I'm Angela. I'm the other half.
So, y'all know what I'm here for and what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to comply with everything. I'm trying to get everything done like they've asked and stuff. They keep, through the zoning thing, they kept saying something about the oil. I pay a company safety clean. They handle all them procedures and everything. I get a receipt every month, what they pick up, when they pick up, everything like that. It's in a container that they provide for me to put it in and everything. You know, yes, I have, I think there's three trucks left up there on top of the hill. I'm waiting on titles. She'll tell you, we just been waiting three months on a title that was sent back to Copar on a truck that they lost the title to, and we end up going to tag office finally figuring out that Copar didn't do what they were supposed to. So I'm four weeks on getting a title for that. The other two trucks over there, I got title, got back on one of them. They'll be gone. There won't be no trucks, you know, as far as that up there. But as far as the way I was understanding with Bailey and the trucks that I got up there, them are my personal trucks. You know, they're going to a scrapyard, but right now they belong to me. You know, I don't want them, I don't need them, you know, but I can't get rid of them without a title. Nobody will take them out of scrapyard or nothing else without a title. It's illegal to do that. So fighting with, you know, mechanic lien and all that stuff to get titles and all that stuff is, it's a job. It's a chore, I mean. But yeah, yeah, I'm trying to comply with anything they say. Like right now, I think I've got a total of four trucks there. Two dump trucks that sit beside the shop. They're my personal trucks that I bought, trying to fix them, whether I'm going to keep them, get rid of them, whatever at that point. But, you know, I mean, if I need to go in and get rid of them, whatever it takes to comply with whatever y'all want or whatever, so I can keep my business, you know? Like I said, the oil and stuff, it's, it's in contained thing that's safety clean, and that's what they do for a living, and that's what their business is. You know, so, and I got containers, you know, what I catch oil in, I don't change oil outside the shop. I know you said something about coolant. Draining coolant out of a big truck versus a car is two totally different things. They, they got a drain plugged that sticks out at the bottom. I got a big container that I catch it in, you know? But, you know, there's a lot of people change oils every day and drops it on the ground. Back in our, back when I was coming up, my dad used to spray the fence line with it all the time, diesel fuel too, you know? So, but like he said, I do, that water down there has been contain, ca-
Contaminated.
Contaminated for a long time. Like I said, them two houses down there below, I do supply the water from them because I do live in the second house. Bailey was off a little bit on where I do live. The second house up, right, oh, the house right above the shop is my stepdad's. I live there fixing to buy that house myself. And then the house above it I own too, which is my mom and my grandma lives in. And then I rent the trailer out up there, you know? But I've tried to clean up and make things right where it looks right. I put a fence up and everything, so.
Anything else you'd like to, I mean, I, I think you're trying to meet the restrictions and number of vehicles in the fluid. The only thing I think that was brought up was maybe have a pickup sign sheet of what they picked up. They offer that from the people that pick the-
I get a receipt for what, they give me a receipt showing how much oil they pick up.
Okay.
Because if, if they don't pick up enough oil, I get charged. So I get charged with it because I don't do a lot of oil changes. I explained that too, and when we was in the zoning thing, it's hard for me to compete with TA truck stops and all these fast things. I mean, even with cars. I mean, Brandon probably justified with that. I mean, it costs somebody for a truck to come, for me to service that truck, it costs them eight hundred, eight hundred to nine hundred dollars to get me to service it because of what the filters and oil and stuff cost. I can go to TA truck stop and get it done for four hundred. You know, it's half the price of what I do, you know? And something else too, I'm, I've cut back on trucks. I've only got probably four or five, maybe six customers I do trucks for now. I've got to the fire department side. I'm doing all of Baden, Bethany's, Indy Fire Department, Aquadale, Westside, just got ahold of me. The city's wanting me to try to start doing work on their trucks and stuff, so I'm trying to lean more towards the fire trucks. They're not going to be there. I mean, they want their trucks back, you know, in a semester time, you know, a good time. So, you know, as far as trucks and stuff goes, I mean, the trucks is going to get cut back. I mean, as soon as I can get titles and stuff, a lot of them's gone anyway. So, you know, it's just be a few trucks that our customers I work on, and then a lot of fire trucks, so.
All right. Question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Page, you keep talking about the trucks. You're waiting on titles.
Yes, sir.
You're waiting on titles because you filed a mechanic's lien?
Yes, sir.
Because they haven't paid you?
Yes, sir.
And how many of those do you have, and where are they parked?
They're parked up on my property up top of the hill. So the power line runs through there. I've got two of them parked over here on this side, and then I got one parked over in front of my sawmill. I got a title coming to the one sitting over by the sawmill, the white one I've got a title to, the red one I'm waiting on a title for it. Soon as they're there, they're gone.
And I guess Bailey, if you add, you know, those trucks that are parked there plus the trucks that are parked at the shop, he's going to be limited to how many trucks? So what would you do? Let's say all this passes, what are you going to do with the trucks that are sitting up on the power line?
Well, if I'm understanding Bailey right, that they're my trucks, I can have them sitting there. And at this point in time, they're my trucks until I can get a title to them. Soon as the state of North Carolina releases a title to me, they're mine, they're going to a junkyard. You know, that's what me and conversation, me and Bailey had today. Like the old Mack dump truck that's sitting there, and I got an old Kenworth dump truck that I'm sitting there that I was going to put a motor in it and stuff, and ain't sure quite what I'm going to do with it and stuff yet, but my, I mean, if I got to move them, I got to move them. I mean, I'll just get rid of them.
Once you get the title.
Yeah. Once they get the titles, they're gone. I mean, I don't want them there. I don't, I have no use for them. I don't want to own a truck. I'm broke enough as it is without owning a truck, too.
How far is the power line from your shop?
A hundred yards probably or so. Is it more than that? I'm not sure. I'm guessing.
Do they have another map that shows the whole area? You can see where the power line is, where that is.
Yeah.
You have one of the maps that show it.
But I mean, like I say, I'm, I'm trying to get it down. I mean, it's been a process. I mean, I put a fence up, and I spent a pile of money putting the fence up, trying to do, and then Bailey's telling me I got to put a bathroom and stuff that I'm going to have to do and stuff and that, and, you know.
Mark, I just want to thank you for being a small business here in Stanley County, and we appreciate what you do. And I know you do a lot of services for people in the county, and-
I do.
-probably a lot more in the county than you do out of the county. And as we talk about tax rates coming up in the county, you know, everybody wants to talk about taxes and lower taxes, and small businesses shuttle a lot of the tax breaks. So I want to see more small businesses come to town and to the county. And I could probably ride around Stanley County right now, and we could gaggle up a hundred people just doing oil changes or something in the backyard, just charging people that shouldn't be. But, you know, I appreciate you trying to come forward and do the right thing.
Well, I mean, and, you know, and I don't, I'm not going to mention no places, but there, there's a shop within a half a mile of mine that, there's a diesel shop, it's been there for years. I'm not going to throw nobody under the bus. I'm not that way. I don't care what they do. It's none of my business what they do with their property. But there's been a diesel shop there for, I've been in Stanley County 22 years, I know it's been there. You know, not a half a mile or so, and that's here or there. But, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I just want to make a living and stuff like that and try to save people money and fire departments. I mean, Aquadale, I mean, they like to fell out whenever I'd done the cylinders on their truck, you know? I handed him a bill for, I think it was $2,800 or something like that, and he just started laughing, thought I'd done, you know, lost my mind or something. And he calls me in the office and CNC was $14,000 to do the same job I'd done for $2,800.
Wow.
You know? So, I mean, it saved them a bunch of money, taxpayers' money, because if they'd have paid CNC $14,000, look where that fire department would have been at that point in, in money, you know?
And it would have taken them a lot longer.
Yeah, I mean, CNC was talking six months to do their fire truck. I'd done it in three weeks and had it done, you know? I'm not trying to upset nobody. I don't, I don't bother nobody. I stay to myself, you know? I just, I want to run a little business and make money. I mean, I'm 56 years old. It's like I told, really, I only want to work till I'm about 62 or so, and I, I want to bear to slow down and do hardly nothing then, you know? So. That's Brandon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Page.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else to speak for or against? Yes, or come forwards?
I'm Justin Carter. I live at 32322 Nanny Drive. Now my-
Mr. Hargit.
Mr. Carter. Justin Carter.
Carter.
Yeah. I live right there on Nanny Drive. Y'all probably know about what's going on in Nanny Drive. I live on the old landfill in Stanley County. So they talking about water contamination and everything else. I understand their concerns there because they're having to tear up every bit of land I live on because of what those people did, had it first. But what he does is he keeps everything in containers. People come in and take it and everything else. And my only other concern is we don't complain about people having broke down vehicles in their driveways and in their yards. It's an HOA. You got neighbors that have broke down vehicles all the time in their yards through there. I understand trying to keep it to a minimum, but you can't go but so much and still run a business. Sometimes you have to wait on parts, and it takes- Sometimes you have to wait on parts, and it takes a little bit longer sometimes. But if it's not all containment or contained right there at the road, what's the biggest concern with everything, every, his property is surrounded by woods. None of the other neighbors, unless they're going through the woods, gonna see it, you know what I mean? If it was at a road or something like that, I could understand. But he's trying to keep it all cleaned up and keep it looking nice in there and still run his business? I just don't understand why now, after all these years, it's a problem. It ain't like this just started. This place been here a long time, and now it's all of a sudden a big old problem. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Carter, I, I just wanted to add, I had the same question, I said, well, if you see a violation asking the officer, if you see something happening like a policeman sees a, a crime being committed, I asked the, the enforcement officer, I said, can you stop him? He said, no, I can't. And he said, the only way that we can enforce something is by complaint, and one of the things you said was, you know, right now, is we're, we're just hearing this.
Mm-hmm.
We're not, you know, we didn't go out and say, hey, you know, Mr. Page, we don't like you, and, you know. But the thing that is complaint driven, and that's when Bailey has to go out and, and they have, they have one of the hardest jobs in the world to go out and, and take that, and if it's not, if there's no complaint, then there's not gonna be anything, you know, said, and that's, that was, I said that to, to give you why there's some of this going on. I had the same question.
Yeah.
Said, wait a minute, I, I know where there's, you know, a dozen of these places, why are, you know, we, we doing that, and it's complaint driven. I tell you the other thing, and this is something that's on my heart, I see the crowds out here, and I know just about, just about every one of them, and I've had the same thing happen, and there's good people in this congrega, well, here, and, uh, I mean, really good. I don't wanna see that neighborhood divided, and the thing, Mr. Page, every single person that I've talked to has said they respect you for agreeing to these conditions and stipulations. He said, he came up and he said, I'll do this. And he said, and they're my understanding, and Tom, you tell me if I'm wrong, and Jill, and, and y'all tell me. But if, if you agree to these conditions, then, and they, there was the parking vehicles off the property shop, no parking vehicles off the shop, record of disposal of fluids, that's only other two things, and my, my understanding is that y'all agreed to this, is that right? I mean, is this, the stipulations, this is agreeable for, for you guys? This was, this is agreeable? Okay. What, and the only other thing was that, you know, parking the vehicles off the shop property and to have some, you know, and I know that. They were gonna charge me today when I come up there, he said, man, if you brought any more oil, you was gonna have to, you know, we're gonna, you gotta fill out a report, and I said, you gotta be kidding. So, it sounds like to me, the, the ones that are here are agreeable to these stipulations, and you tell me if I'm wrong, Tom, y'all, if they're agreeable, if y'all are agreeable to, to follow them. Is that, okay?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, he trying to agree to everything you're doing, it's just trying to work everything out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Was there anyone else that had anything they'd like to say or against? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And what would be the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, the, the no parking of vehicles off the property shop and record of the, the fluids, disposal fluids, you know, and, and what they've already agreed to. It sounds like to me that both parties are agreeable to that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this ma'am.
Just if it is a, an approval situation, if you would just consider adding the additional bathroom, um, the building for the bathroom also, and if you also wanted to agree upon the fence, um, not having to be placed between him and Mr. Fields, if you wanted to consider those two, um, in whatever decision you make also.
Bathroom's not on the part we got, it's just on the part that you had.
It's just on the slideshow, I'll bring that, sorry, um, that was me today, I had to amend that today for, um, Mr. Page. It's the, um, bottom one in red, um, it's would replace the other one that's listed in red.
And the bathroom can either be separate or adjoining to the building, is that right?
Um, yes, but after speaking with Mr. Page, um, it's my understanding it more than likely will be its own separate, and in that case, and the reason that is, is because the building's already fifteen hundred square feet, so, um, that kinda put him in a limbo.
Yes, Mr. Page, you're-
So, when I, she, whenever she was telling me all this, it's been a while back, Chris, Moon, I can't remember, so Chris called me, I called Chris and talked to him and everything, and he said I had to have a handicap accessible bathroom. Um, so I think, I forget what size he said, but anyway, there's no way that I can put it inside the shop-
Right.
To be able to put, make it a handicap accessible. So, that's when I, me and Bailey was talking today, I said, you know, I know you say I ain't letting that no more, nothing else on the, um, off the shop or anything, but Chris Moon did say that I could put it off shop, that's reason I talked to Bailey about that, I said, Bailey, I said, do we need to do something about this, because I don't, you know, I wanna try to comply with everything that said, so, yes, I'm gonna have to build a little bathroom outside the shop to make it a handicap accessible.
You, you're not gonna have to have it off the property though, right? You can have it on the side.
It's gonna be right beside the shop.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's gonna be right there where the shop is, I just gotta, while they require me to have a bathroom, I'm an only employee and I only live
All right.
thirty steps from the shop, but I mean, I'll do whatever they say, you know, so, yeah, um, it's gonna have to be right there at the shop.
All right, that's, thank you. Okay, the hearing's closed, and I, do I have a recommendation from the commissioners?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the amendment to allow him to proceed in, with the amendment of adding the bathroom, and what else you say you needed there, Bailey? Oh, and I'm okay with leaving the fence out too, since the neighbor right behind him doesn't care to have one, I don't see a reason to force a fence.
There was no parking of vehicles off property shop and record of disposal.
So I move that this board approves CR twenty-five oh-two, the conditional rezoning request by Mark Page for the conditional rezoning of an approximately point eight-six acre tract in order to accommodate a single-family dwelling in a diesel shop, because the applicant has agreed to meet all the required conditions and is consistent with the twenty forty Stanley County Land Use Plan. And you want me to add the part about the, the bathroom being added, and I'm okay with the fence not being added since the neighbor's good with it?
And also, I think Mr. Mills pointed out the, the, no storage off the property shop, or the shop, or the property and their disposal, record of disposal.
Okay, I think he already has the regular disposals, but, and, uh, no property off the shop.
And, uh, everybody understand the motion? I need a second for it. Second by Commissioner Crump. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. I'd like to take a five-minute recess if we could right quick, and then, uh, we'll be right back.
Request CR twenty-five dash oh three, request for Gateway of Hope, presenter Bailey Klein or planning director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the last item that I have before you, let me get to it really quickly, is CR twenty-five dash zero three. This is a request by Gateway of Hope Addiction Recovery Center for the conditional rezoning of an approximately three acre tract in order to accommodate for a group care facility for clinical substance abuse treatment located at four six four six one Campground Road in New London. Gateway of Hope is currently in the acquisition process with Christian Recovery Centers in order for Christian Recovery Centers to purchase and operate from this property. Their managing team met with the Technical Review Committee, which is composed of several different county departments. This includes inspections, environmental health, utilities, permitting, fire marshal, et cetera, in order to find out what the process would be to get this project started and what regulations they would need in order to comply. Their team then met with planning staff individually. They shared that their plan is to start with the three acre parcel, which currently contains a building that would be renovated to use as an education center and storage. They plan to place a residence on the property in order to house at least six residents on site. Their team has agreed upon a list of conditions, which were included in your packets, and I'll go over those in a second. The list of the conditions puts a list of restrictions on the property that includes parking, signage, fencing, fence, oh my goodness, fencing, and buffering, I can't speak. As the planning board, you are able, or as the Board of County Commissioners, you are able to amend, remove, or add any conditions with the consent of the applicant. Gateway of Hope does currently own several adjoining properties as well, and they plan to potentially expand in the future. If this continues to be their plan, they have to come back to the planning board and then also to you all to add those further parcels in there. This property does lie in the rural preservation area and is approximately zero point six eight miles from the town of New London. All adjoinders within a hundred feet of the property were notified, and there was a sign posted on the property. With that, I will say I had not received, since the sign was posted for the planning board meeting, I have not received any phone calls regarding the zoning sign for the use of this property for people that were in concern. So, the conditions, I'll go over those quickly. The use of the proposed residential home will be limited to a group care facility for six residents. Roadways to access the parcel will be improved and maintained by the owner. Lighting on the property shall only be cutoff style fixtures and lights shall be shielded and or angled to prevent light trespass in neighboring properties. Mechanical equipment shall be screened with a wooden fenced slash slatted chain link fence or vegetation to the height of the existing, of the equipment plus six inches. The HVAC and other mechanical equipment shall not be located in the front yard. Enclosures shall be present around the dumpster area at least six feet tall. Dumpsters and or trash handling facilities shall not be located within any required buffer or within five feet of any property line, whichever is greater. Such facilities shall not be located in front of the front wall of the structure. There shall be one parking space per three hundred square feet of the existing structure. One illuminated sign, thirty-two square foot monument sign shall be permitted at the entry of the property. There will be a fifteen foot vegetative buffer or six foot opaque fence placed along the adjoining property lines unless the adjoining agrees to have those removed. The proposed double wide for housing will remain at least twenty-five feet from the side property line and fifty feet from the rear property lines and front. The manufactured homes shall have masonry underpinnings. So, those are the conditions that were agreed upon by the applicant with staff. This is the parcel in question, where this building sits and where it's outlined in green. This is the property, the three acre tract, that they are requesting at this time. It's my understanding they own adjoining parcels such as this one, the one behind here and here, and I believe the Culp's own some land, and they also own this one. So, they own a large chunk also behind here as well. So, this is the property that is currently in question, and they're only asking for this parcel. This is the land use plan map. So, as you can see, this green area, this indicates that rural preservation area, and then over here is the town of New London limits. That's why it doesn't have a color. It's just that translucent color. So, as I stated, this is just a land use plan map. So, this is the current zoning of the property. It's actually zoned campground, rural recreational, and so that's why it's in that darker green. And then this is probably the only area that I've found in the county that's actually zoned county neighborhood business. It's not a very common zoning district in the county, and so that is a small portion over here. But as of now, they're not requesting for that to be rezoned. It's just this section right here. This is also from Google. This is as close as it would let me get, but you can kind of see the structure, and then obviously this is the pond in front of it, but this is the structure in question that they're going to make that educational facility. Obviously, it will have to be brought up to code with Chris Moon and building inspections. Everything with environmental health will have to be signed off on, but this is that building that they are asking for that education center and storage to be at. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me. Like I said, I have not received any formal complaints about this as I've worked on it, and the sign was posted and everyone was notified surrounding this property.
Yeah, the existing structure that's on there, is that going to be where the six people will be housed, or?
No, so that will be a double wide. So, they're planning to bring in a double wide from somewhere like Clayton Homes or somewhere like that in order to house the six residents. So, they will be living there, but that, this building is where the education center will be and also storage.
And they've already fixed that building up? I mean, they hadn't done anything on the inside. They just made it more presentable on the outside.
We'll get a question.
Okay. Instructors and stuff in that building too, or is that just six of the clients? Or is it going to be more than six, counting the supervision or whatever that might be there?
There, from the planning board meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there will be twenty-four hour supervision, but they won't be staying in there. That'll just be for the residents. Yeah.
When you have stipulations, for example, this one says the manufactured home will have a masonry underpinning.
Yes.
So, they have six months, and then you give them six months, and then you have an officer go out and say, hey, have you got this in place?
Yes.
That's the way it works?
Yes.
Just usually six months?
Yes.
Okay.
For their first inspection.
Nobody else got anything? I'm going to open the hearing. I have a hearing opening for CR twenty-five oh two, reconditioners zoning request for a Gateway of Hope. Do I have anyone for or against to speak?
Yes.
I think this will go faster than the last one for you. Paul Wilkins, Campground Road, four six four seven zero is my address. I'm the director of Gateway of Hope, and this property, we purchased a year ago this month and have completely renovated the outside of it. Looks like a brand new building, actually, brand new roof siding, everything. Brand new doors, aluminum, aluminum, nice aluminum doors. And the reason why we'd like to set the double wide there just to the back of that building is for the purpose of actually expanding our, our staff presence. And we have over forty acres of property, and one of the challenges we have is how do you monitor forty acres of property? So, that, we have purposely offset that, that double wide to the backside of that building. If you look at the bottom of the picture, there's two houses on the bottom. The one is a red roof, and then over to the right, those, both of those buildings will have staff in them as well. So, one of the purposes is to, really to cover our, cover our property and just give it a good. We also have that entrance that comes behind the fish camp that comes right past, you know, that driveway. We, it's, it's as much about a security as it is, the location of it is for security and for monitoring the residents that will be there. We would not put six residents in that building by themselves without having staff. They, they don't, if we go to a meeting, if they were in this meeting right now and owner or residents got up to go to restroom, staff goes with them. We monitor the residents very closely, so they would never spend the night there without staff. Be glad to answer any other questions, or any questions.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Wilkins? I think we're good.
All right. Well, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak for or against the rezoning? Hearing none, I'm called a rezoning hearing here. It was closed and would seek the direction from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that this board approves CR twenty-five dash oh three, the conditional rezoning request by Gateway of Hope for the conditional rezoning of approximately three acre tract in order to accommodate for a clinical substance abuse treatment facility because the application has agreed to meet all the required conditions that is consistent with the twenty forty Stanley County Land Use Plan.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eifert. Do I have a second?
Second by Commissioner Hatton. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, seven aye. Next on the agenda is the FY twenty-five twenty-six Opioid Settlement Fund Recommendations. Presenter is Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The opioid settlement funds, we opened up the grant proposals in February of twenty-five. An RFP process, and we had several applicants apply for those funds. They were really focused on, the RFP was focused on recovery housing, recovery support services, both transportation and peer support, post overdose response, evidence-based treatment, reentry programs for incarcerated individuals, addiction treatment for incarcerated persons and early intervention. A two hundred thirty thousand dollar cap was placed on the funding request, and really that was just simply to prolong our funds. If, you know, we don't want there to be a five or six hundred thousand dollar request because then it just eats into the available funding we have. We're trying to keep these funds available to continue to do this good work for an extended period of time. It's anticipated our reserve balance for the opioid settlement funds as of June thirtieth this year will be roughly one point two million, one point two six. It's anticipated we'll receive additional seven hundred thousand dollars next year. You can see from the ten programs and the applications, the recommendation is to spend eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So, obviously, if we're going to get six hundred, if we're going to get seven hundred thousand, we're recommending eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We will tap into part of that one point two, which was similar to what we did this year. We tapped into the reserve balance to fund programs this year as well, but the concern was, there was actually one point two six million requested, we're recommending eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The concern is if we, you know, we fund what's exactly requested, you're talking about almost another three hundred thousand. So, that brings your reserves under a million. That's not sustainable for more than a few years before you run out, and then you're only, and at the same time, the amount of money we're getting each year is also declining. And so, I think our fear is helping these agencies and these nonprofits become more sustainable on their own and not relying on government funding and/or in the case, the opioid settlement funding. And so, we don't want, we don't, there's a concern that we, if we continue to just grow them, what's going to happen when the funding runs out? I know what's going to happen. We're going to get, they're going to request county funding and county taxpayer dollars instead of opioid settlement funds, and that's would be a big burden on our, on our, on our budget. And so, the goal is to try to extend these funds as long as possible, keep the good work up, and we are doing, there is good work. I mean, we were, you know, back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we were one of the highest in the state for ER opioid deaths and opioid admissions, and now we don't even show up on the radar. I mean, we've, we've made really, really significant progress in Stanley County, and I think it's, it's, you know, the success of that is attributed to these, these nonprofits that have been working with us with first the HERSA funds and now the opioid settlement funds. And so, before you is a list of, or there's a spreadsheet in there that shows you the, the agencies, the sort of category of funding that, that they're, and services they're providing, what was requested, what's recommended. We also have done resolutions. These are required by the Opioid Settlement Fund and the MOA that governs the use of those funds is to have these resolutions adopted by the board to authorize the funding. And so, I'll stop there and answer any questions the board may have about any of the specific programs or any of the, or the process or the recommendations.
Do you have any questions for Andy Lucas?
Mr. Chairman, I do. The Health Department, six thousand dollars for distribution of
Naloxone.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the naloxone is, that's the, to help revive individuals that may have overdosed. And so, we, we actually keep that for law enforcement agencies. A lot of the law enforcement agencies, first responders, volunteer fire departments, and their stocks sometimes will expire and they need more. And so, the goal here is to use some of these funds, so the Health Department will have some on hand, not only to be able to provide to agencies, but also be able to provide to individuals who, you know, loved ones who may have a loved one who's addicted and, you know, wants to have a, you know, a dose of this on hand in case something happens to their loved one and try to bring them back. So, that's the, that's the goal of this. To be honest with you, our Health Department has had naloxone for years. This isn't anything new. We're just, the, the avenues to get it have started to dry up, and so we're trying to use some of these funds just to be able to have some on hand at the Health Department.
I mean, can you kind of give us a forty thousand square foot procedure that they go through? I mean, can someone walk into the Health Department and say, I need the naloxone, what is it?
Naloxone.
Yeah.
I think they would, they're not just going to walk in and give it to them. They would, you know, again, a good portion of this is going to be used to give to agencies such as the Sheriff's Office and the law enforcement agencies. They carry this stuff with them, the Sheriff's deputies, volunteer fire departments. They have naloxone with them in case they come across somebody who's potentially overdosing, and they can keep them alive. So, some of this will be used to that. Others will be used, be available for, for folks, maybe an addict, and they, you know, needs, has, needs an injection or needs naloxone so that if they do overdose, they have it available. Or it could be a loved one of somebody who's addicted, who's concerned and wants to have it on hand in case the person that they, that's addicted lives with them and something happens, they can bring them, you know, revive them and bring them back to life. So, they're not just going to give it to them. There would be some counseling and coaching and conversation and trying to get them into treatment or trying to refer them to something. They're not just going to hand them, you know, six or seven doses and say, good luck to you. That's a, Daymark does, yeah. I don't know to what extent. I think it's times they have some in there and other times they don't. But yeah, Daymark keeps a box outside of their office that has naloxone in it, that, you know, people can come and just grab. Yeah, ours would be much, it's, we're not, we're not proposing to put a box up and just let people take it.
So, they do have access through Daymark to do that?
Daymark has some, but it varies. It does, it ebbs and flows in terms of whether that's stocked out there, that, that box outside. And then, you know, and unfortunately, people come in because it's not secure, there's people who just come by there and just grab it and then just take it. They don't even, folks don't even know what it is, and they just take it.
Andy, I have a question.
If you would, what the recovery EMS, the post overdose response?
Yeah, our community paramedic program, which is one of the, one of the state, they've won state awards. They're, I mean, they're, they're a model for the rest of North Carolina. There's been numerous counties who've come to seen us or we've been asked to go see at the request of the state to demonstrate what we're doing with our community paramedic program. They basically, when there's, when there's an overdose, our folks will, our community paramedics will respond and provide, you know, that, that treatment to potentially revive them, and then they will also follow up with them to try to help them get into treatment. They also, if the person is in treatment and they're doing medicated assisted treatment, our community paramedics will actually administer that, that medicated assisted treatment to them. So, that, they're providing that. That's part of what our community paramedics do. The other part of it is not opioid related. It's, they work through Atrium, and they, when people get released from the hospital, you know, they, they go and check on them. We get actually paid by Atrium for those services. Those aren't, those aren't drug addicted services. Those are you or I having something happen to us, and we need to be at home to rehabilitate, and they check on them so they don't, we don't have an readmission within thirty days because that affects their Medicaid funding.
I think they work with you too some, Paul, don't they?
Our community, our EMS community paramedic works with all these programs. I mean, they're, they are, again, they are, that's, it's a, it's a state recognized program, and we've, we've gained a lot of recognition for what our EMS has been able to do.
Andy, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, looking at this list of the ten different nonprofits here, six out of the ten are fully funded with the requested amount that they have asked. So, I'm sure everybody's individual, but what was the rhyme or reason for cutting on some?
Yeah, I think it was just looking at, some of them we felt like were used, were, were needing that full amount, like Bridge Recovery. I mean, they've demonstrated that they need that full amount in order, based on demand. Others, we felt like, for, I'll use, for example, U R I Harm Reduction. I think it was just a matter of if you look at what, who they're serving, the number of they're serving really hasn't changed, and we're, but the services they're proposing are slightly different. So, we just didn't, it wasn't a compelling argument to give them the fully, full funding. And so, again, I would say that was sort of same with Will's Place. I mean, they asked for eighty thousand. We recommended seventy, which was a ten thousand dollar increase from last year, but they're roughly going to serve the same number of folks and do the same services. And so, we felt like that ten thousand dollars from an inflationary perspective was, would more than meet their, their needs to continue to provide those services at the level they were providing. And the same thing with Christian Recovery. I mean, they asked for two hundred and thirty thousand. We funded them at Gateway at sixty-three thousand dollars this year. We just didn't, they are going to expand and do more things, but we just didn't feel like we could, the community just didn't feel like we could jump from sixty-three thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand all in one year. So, we just tried to look at their, the number served, how many people they're going to be serving. I know with Christian Recovery, we looked at the number they're going to spend per day and how many projected to serve, and that's, it kind of got back to that same number. And so, we were, we just felt like that, that matched up, that number matched up more closely with what they said they were going to do versus just the two hundred and thirty thousand. And so, that's sort of where, how we, we got to some of these. I mean, obviously, the board has the flexibility. You can fund them at whatever level you want. My only concern is if you fund them at one point two and they're fully requested, you're going to be dipping into your fund balance in a more significant way, and that's just going to, two or three years from now, you're going to be in a situation where these agencies are going to be needing, wanting more money, and you're, they're not, the money is going to be drying up from this fund, and then they're going to, if they're, they want more money, the money's going to have to come from taxpayer dollars.
Okay. And my next question is, so this was the committee that came
Yeah, this was, I met with this, Wendy Grocock and Dolly and I were the ones who reviewed all the applications, went through them all, shared our notes and came, went around the room and decided on, you know, our recommendations and made sure that we were all in agreement with the numbers that we had on the paper.
Okay. Are they finding out now from this, or were they given a notification?
These agencies, some of them are aware because they've seen the agenda, but some of them hadn't. And to be honest with you, this was finalized Thursday afternoon. So, I mean, yeah, so some of them may be finding out for the first time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And again, nothing's final until you approve it. So, these are just our recommendations. Once you all adopt them, we'll let them know what actually was adopted. Yeah. Yeah.
Andy, there was a time that opioid settlement mandated by the pharmaceuticals that were paying the settlement, that a prescription was required in order to be treated. And it left out the faith-based treatment places. And since then, it's been corrected to where just like Paul can, can receive money. But there was a time when this first came out, the pharmaceuticals said, hey, we're going to give you money, but you're going to have to get a prescription from us. It's got to be, the, the treatment's got to go to someone that's getting the prescription.
Um, that's, that's not, they, there was, as you can see from this list, I mean, we have Bridge to Recovery, faith-based, Christian Recovery Centers, faith-based. Um, there's a lot of faith-based organizations we've been funding here and had success with. Um, it's all in our conversations, um, you know, they're, they're providing recovery support services. Maybe not be, they may be providing treatment, but what we're funding them for is recovery support services. So it's how you fit it into the bucket.
Thank you.
We have, anybody else have any questions? There's two resolutions on here. You need both of them?
Uh, there's one resolution for all, every one of the programs. So there should be a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 of them. Should be 10 resolutions in there. They're both, they're both two pages each. So there should be 20 pages of in my packet there is, I don't know. Something happened. With what you're seeing online.
There's one for each one, isn't there?
That's correct. We, that's, that's required by the MOA that we have for these, the use of these funds. We have to, we have to approve them separately. Even, even if we, even if there was, even if it was this, let's say we were going to give funding to, um, Christian Recovery Centers for two different programs. We couldn't do that all in one resolution. You'd actually have to do two different resolutions for the two different services.
That's, that's We need to do each resolution.
I mean, you could do them all, you could just, you could just approve the resolutions as presented with the recommendations, or if you're going to make any changes, then you'd obviously have to take them one by one.
Must be the pleasure of the board, Dan.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended programs and authorize the appropriations of funds via resolutions from the county opioid settlement funds from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026.
Do I have a second? A second? Vice Chair Brandon? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Next item is the, uh, 2025, 26 recommended dependent care, health and dental premium rates for approval.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is for the 25, 26 dependent care, health and dental premium rates, uh, for approval. Uh, these will be for July 1 of 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Um, these are for both our dependent care health insurance and our dependent care for dental. We're not recommending any increase to our health insurance. We're recommending that the rate stay the same, um, based on our, how our claims have been trending. And we're recommending just a few cents on dental, uh, based, these are recommendations that were based on, uh, what's come from, um, our guardian, our carrier on that. And, um, so that, those are the rates for your consideration. And these are not employee, these aren't the employee rates. These are the, if, if an employee decides to cover dependents, these are the rates that they would pay um, for that dependent care on a bi-weekly basis.
Any questions from anybody? Uh, there's no, uh, action to be taken on this.
No, you'll have to approve these.
Have to approve these, okay.
Because we'll, we'll have to set them up to be able to bill them come July 1.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the rates that have been submitted.
Okay, I got a motion made by Commissioner Lahan. A second? Second by Vice Chair Brandon King. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. And we have the manager recommended budget presentation.
I'm ready when you are, Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm proud to be here this evening to, um, present the 25, 26, uh, managers recommended budget uh, for the county's, um, board's consideration. Need to thank a lot of our, all of our department heads, um, for all the work they put into putting their requests together. A lot of time and effort goes into them putting their requests together. Um, I know they spend weeks, if not months, putting those requests together, backup documentation. Um, and then obviously, um, need to thank Melissa and Emily and Toby for all their help, um, uh, on the finance and HR side to, to get this recommended budget, um, ready and available for you, uh, this evening. I'm just going to overview the book. I know, like, for instance, I know Commissioner Mills is new. And so just to kind of hit the highlights of what's in here in this, in this large packet of information, you'll have a recommended budget in brief, which is just sort of a two-page overview summary, um, of what's in the budget. That really the, the hits the key highlights. After that budget in brief, you'll see a transmittal letter. That transmittal letter is probably 12, 13 pages long. That's got a lot of details in, um, about the budget. Um, you know, the, the capital items that were requested, what's recommended, any personnel, um, new positions that were requested, what's been recommended. It gives a good breakdown of what the school system has asked for, what's been recommended. You know, what the history of funding the schools has been over the last few years. And it shows, you know, has, you know, information about that. Um, and so that, if you, you don't read anything else, that transmittal letter is a pretty, pretty good piece of information and provides a, a pretty good overview of the budget. After that, you're going to see a couple of spreadsheets, one that really focuses on the total dollars um, of what this budget is versus the previous year's budget. And then one that will really, um, provide the total dollars, but also show you just county dollars. So that's just property tax and sales tax, um, or, um, fees and services that we collect. And so you can kind of get a sense of what that, that service is costing taxpayers. Um, and so those are, and then there's a receipt, um, that we, that we provide, um, for, um, based on the recommended budget that basically shows, you know, folks ask, well, out of the taxes I pay, where's all my money go? And they can, you can clearly see in one, one page, uh, this is, the average taxpayer is going to pay this based on the, based on our, the total property tax receipts that we, we were anticipated based on the recommended budget. And you can clearly see where that, your money's going. Um, then there's the, um, we, the way the budget's structured is we go in and we pull out every year. So you'll, you'll adopt a budget in June. Beginning in January, we start to do projections. And then we also begin to go in there and look at the budget and we take out one-time stuff, pull that out of the department's budgets. Um, and we, and then establish a target for them based on just an inflationary increase. And so, you know, once, and that's basically their current level of service. Then they, they don't need those one-time things that were one-time. And so they, um, they have that inflationary increase plus what they need in order to continue to carry out. If they want anything above that, then they have to request that as an enhancement. Uh, and there's a whole list of those enhancements for you and what was requested and what was recommended. There's a couple of spreadsheets with that. And then you really get into the line item details of every single department, all the revenue, all the expense. And then you'll have, you'll see the recommended fee schedule at the back and you'll see the fees that are requested and recommended. Um, and then you can make decisions of how, what you want to do to those fees when we get to the adopted budget. Uh, just the bottom line, um, the tax rate's recommended to drop to 51 cents. Revenue neutral was 50.26, so point 5026. So I'm recommending a, uh, a tax rate that's three quarters of a penny above revenue neutral. Um, and I've tied that to one-time capital items in your capital improvement plan. Um, so if you were to say, well, we don't, we want a, we want a 50 cent, we want to go slightly lower than revenue neutral, my response would be, okay, we can just take out, we'll defer these capital improvement items. And so your five-year capital improvement plan and the things you wanted to get done in that first or second year, we'll just get pushed off another year. Um, and that would be, you know, awaited to, uh, get to 50 cents. Um, I mean, obviously that has a cost too, uh, because those things aren't going to get less expensive, um, likely, unless we get into a recession, which nobody wants. Um, and so recommending a 51 cent tag, that's a 10 cent reduction to our current rate of 61 cents. Um, the difference between 50 cents and 51 cents is $945,000 because one penny will generate $945,000. Um, the difference between 50, 51, which I've recommended in the revenue neutral rate of 50.26 is $669,000. Um, this, this budget increases funding for education. It increases funding for public safety and it makes investments in our facilities, our vehicles and our equipment. Here is the requested budget against the recommended budget. So the green column is the requested budget. Over 125.6 million dollars of funding was requested. I'm recommending a budget of 99.191. That is a 26 and a half million dollar difference. And if you divide that by $945,000, one penny on the tax rate, that you would have to increase taxes 28 cents from the 51 cents, you'd have to add 28 cents in order to get to fund everything that's in the requested budget. Uh, all 125 million dollars of that. You can see this is just sort of a multi-year view of our budget. Um, you know, obviously our budget has grown. Um, some of this has been a result of new revenue, like when the quarter cent sales tax came on. I mean, that was a, you know, you got $3 million of new revenue. Um, so obviously that's going to boost up your budget some. Um, you know, every year we have a revaluation and you have that additional revenue come in. That's going to boost up the budget. So, but you know, you'll see that this budget is only a 2.4% increase. Um, I feel like that's pretty consistent with inflation. I think inflation for the South Atlantic region over the last year is 1.96, um, from March to March. And so I feel like this, this budget really holds line on inflation to try to make sure that we're not spending and out punting our kick coverage, uh, in terms of what we have going into the future. Um, I think it's important we create a sustainable budget and don't, don't get too out in front of ourselves and, um, grow at a, at a good reasonable pace. Um, so this budget, this 99.1 is 2.4% more than what we, we, you approved last year, um, in June. Includes $70 million in county dollars, which is sales tax and, and property tax and fees and services. 9.5 billion of assessed value, that's a $2.2 billion increase, 30%. Um, fund balance appropriated is tied to one-time capital projects. So not only did I tie the, 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 um, the difference, the 51 cents, the three quarters of a penny to capital, I also did fund balance, um, what we appropriated fund balance to capital as well. That way we're not, if next year, we don't need that fund balance in the budget to balance budgets, not tied to operating. So, you know, it's, you're not going to use, you're not, I'm not recommending we use a one-time revenue source to continue to fund our, the operating budget. It's, does generate about $2.8 million a year. Because I think this year it's slated to bring in 2.85 ish. Now it's varied. I mean, that's grown over time. I mean, and it ebbs and flows. I mean, you have good economy, it goes down, or good economy goes up, bad economy, it fluctuates. Um, and in my, in the transmittal letter, I've showed exactly how much of each penny, where those dollars go to that go to the school. So you'll see the 40 and 42 that have to go to capital, how much that is of that 46, where that goes. I think of that, I think it's, I'm using some reserves for, um, I've recommended for, I'll get into Indy School and other things. But of basically of that 2.8, about 2 million of it's going in the school's operating fund. So you can see, here's how we get the revaluation and how we get to a revenue neutral tax rate, uh, per general statute. Um, we take the existing, you're looking at our existing budget, projected assessed valuation for 24, 25. Before the evaluation, $7.3 billion. Multiply that by the 61 cents, get 44.9 million. So with the new assessed valuation after review, we're 90, 90, 99.5 billion dollars, multiplied by 4683, you get a gross levy of 44.9 million dollars. So there's, so that's the equivalent revenue. But by statute, you get a growth factor, um, for the annual, average annual percent increase in your tax base due to improvements in growth. So if you, if you didn't, you wouldn't be getting, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, if you just went to the equivalent, um, equivalent revenue number, the 4683, you wouldn't be getting any of your growth revenue that you naturally would have gotten with new homes being built over the last year, new businesses opening, new pieces of equipment being put on the books. I mean, if you, you're, you're, you need to be able to pick that up. And so that's why the state has included that growth factor in the revenue neutral formula. So what that growth factor has been is you'll see below is 7.34%. So you take the 4.683 cents, multiply it by the 7.34% growth factor and it gets you the revenue neutral number of 50.26. And that would be, um, the revenue neutral, uh, tax rate.
So revenue neutral is still including 7.34?
It, and it really, it needs to have a growth factor in it because if you don't, if you just go to the equivalent, you're not picking up the growth that you've had in this county from January 1 of 2024 to January 1 of 2025. I mean, you had growth that occurred and you're not picking that up if you don't, if you don't, um, if you don't include that growth factor, you're not allowing for that. So that's why the state's allowed for that growth factor to be included in your, in that formula. And that formula comes straight, um, from 159 dash 11E. Um, so that, that's, and then, in the, in the transmittal letter, I actually took the snippet from the general statute and put it in your, in that, in that letter. So you can read the whole, whole, that whole section of the, um, general statute. So you can clearly see how that's calculated. I'm recommending $719,000 increase to the school's operating budget. It's 4.4, 4.4% increase. I'm recommending 4 million in capital outlay, which is tied to anticipated sales tax. Um, they are, they're entitled to a certain percentage of our article, um, 40 and our article 42 sales tax on articles. And so that 4 million is what we project to get. And so that's what I'm recommending. Um, I'm also recommending $600,000 be used from our article 46, which was the quarter cent sales tax. There's a reserve because we've brought in more than we've budgeted out. Um, and so I'm recommending 600,000 of that. I think at the end of this year, we're estimating there'll be about 800,000 in that reserve. So I'm recommending about 600,000 of it, using a good portion of it, um, to help offset that road access road that they need to, to get to the backside for fire protection for Indy School. Um, they asked for us to fund it at 1.2 million. I'm recommending 600,000 based on the fact that they're, have a, they had a pretty good fund balance at the end of last year, both on a general fund side, which was, has been built with local tax dollars and on a capital improvement and on a capital outlay side. So they have a pretty, they had, they had a well over $3 million in capital reserves at the end of June 30th of 2024. And they had 4.9 million dollars in general fund reserves at the end of, um, end of 2020, or June of 2024. So I feel like they can help cost share, um, this. And to be honest with you, this board asked them specifically, when they came and came to us and said, how much do you need? Is this everything? And they said, yes, this is everything. And then a couple of months later, they said, we need more money for this. So I feel like this is a, I feel like this is meeting them in the middle, um, for, um, for that, for, for, for that project. So
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
How much are we over what the state mandates us to pay the school system with this budget?
Um, that's a, that's a difficult question. The state doesn't mandate that we give them, they mandate us to give a percentage of our article 40 and article 42 sales tax to them for capital improvement. There's really no mandate on operating for the schools. But there's been law, there's been lawsuits and other things that have come up that say that the county should be helping out with operating. But there's been never really a specific number or percentage that we have to fund of their operating budget. The, their operating budget is the state's responsibility by statute. Capital improvement, we, we do have a responsibility for their capital outlay and their capital improvement. And that's what article 40 and 42 are for, is to help with that. And article 46 is, and also, you know, the quarter cent can help with that as well. But there's really no specific number that we have to get to, to, from a state, from their operating budget. But there have been lawsuits brought against schools, about, against counties by school systems and different judges have weighed in and there's been, there, so there is this sense and there's legal precedent that counties need to, you know, provide some supplement to what the state's doing.
And there's nothing from cities And there's nothing from cities or?
No, 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 there's no, now.
There's no statute that they're required, just, just the county?
No, no, there, now there are cities where you have city schools. We don't have city schools anymore, we've been consolidated, but there are cities in this state, I'm sure, that where there is a city school that probably does provide some, some amount of funding to a school. I doubt it's significant, but.
I'm more used to when there was an Alamo City School.
That's my understanding. I wasn't here at that time, but that's my understanding they did. What I've, what I've, what I'm recommending is they're, then they're, based on their per pupil would go from uh 1814 a student to 1881 a student. So um, you know, I'm, I'm continuing, we're continuing to invest. And again, it's 4.4%, our entire budget only went up 2.4%. And so, you know, I'm, I'm recommending more to them and plus, and that's not even adding in the 7, 600,000 for the ND school project. Um, and they, and they ask for a lot more than this, you'll see it in their recommended budget. I mean, they ask for um a, a, a fairly significant amount of money, um, both on the capital side and on the operating side. I mean, you would have to raise taxes multiple cents in order to meet their requested budget or make significant cuts to our operating budget in other areas. Um, I'm recommending a $61,000 increase to the school, the um operating fund for the community college. It's a 3.5% increase plus an additional uh 25,000 for their capital outlay. It gets them from 275 to 300,000, it's a 900, um, 9% increase. Um, just to help them with some of their capital outlay needs. They had a boiler that went bad really close to the end of this fiscal year. Um, so, you know, they've got some aging infrastructure too, like we do and like the schools do. Um, so I'm just trying to make sure that we're providing enough money for them to keep up with, with their needs. Um, if you look at the education inflation index that the state uses, um, if we, if you ever get to a mediation um scenario um with a school system and you look at what I'm, what I've recommended um and what this board has adopted over the years, um, you can see that we're, we're definitely outpacing what that formula would be in terms of that education index. So um, I, I, I feel like this board is doing what it can within its means without raising taxes significantly um on the citizens, you know, as far as education goes. And the other piece I would say is if they're building a fund balance, you know, from, you know, their fund balance went up a couple of million dollars and the year before that it went up several hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if they're building a fund balance, obviously they're, they, you know, they're able to save some money. Um, so, so what you're providing must be meeting their needs if they're saving money. Where the money goes, you can see that 35% of your local dollars are allocated to uh education. 83% for mandated services, it's 82 million dollars, jail, debt, DSS, EMS, sheriff, education. Um, 75% of the county's money goes to three major categories, education, public safety and health and human services. So when folks say, you know, what's the county's money going to? 75% of it's going to public education, public safety or health and human services. Um, and 83% of it is going to things that we don't have control over. We have to fund them. Well, we have some control over how much we fund, but you don't have a choice of whether you fund those services or not. And from a local perspective, you know, one third of, one third of every dollar that, you know, you were, that you spend in local property taxes go into the public school system. Just looking at human capital recommendations, um, you can kind of see where our um voluntary turnover rate has ebbed and flowed over the last few years. Um, you know, we're, right now, we're projected to, to be at or maybe below where we were last year. Um, the departments asked for 19 full-time, additional full-time staff and two part-time positions, and they asked for eight reclassifications. Um, I did, I am recommending one new full-time position, but that's not in the general fund and it's not tied to taxes. It's for the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant. Uh, I just feel with that project coming on and what we've got going on out there that we could use. We, but what I've done is I've reduced the part-time to have a full-time. I feel like we need another dedicated full-time person out there. The, the, the part-time folks, just getting them scheduled and getting them out there is just not consistent enough. And feel like we need, need um another operator. Um, and I have um recommended four, five reclassifications. One would be to take the two 30-hour part-time 911 telecommunicators to uh full-time 40-hour positions, a part-time foreign language interpreter in the dental clinic to a full-time position. Um, a uh, we're actually, this, this one actually saves funding. It's a D, the DSS director position, downgrading that to an income maintenance administrator position. Um, and then a sheriff's office, uh, senior office specialist, which is a grade two position, increasing that to an administrative specialist, grade 64, to make it consistent with other positions in that office that are in clerical area. I am recommending a 3% COLA for our employees, effective 7-1. And I'm proposing that we increase the merit funding pool by 25,000, uh, upping that to 325,000 just to stretch those dollars a little further um with inflation um for mid-year paper performance. Um, I'm recommending that we maintain our employee wellness clinic for our employees as well as the health insurance gain sharing that we do um at the end of the fiscal year. Actually, once the audit's done and um we get into October, then we have savings in our health insurance fund. You just see the major expenditure, expenditure, expenditure changes. The 3% COLA, um, that represents 928,000. The increased operational funding to the schools, 719. The debt service for the new uh 911 EOC EM facility, 635. Um, funding to cover the road, 600. Um, the redundancy in our 911 emergency radio system, enhancing that is at 444,000. We need to replace two air handlers at the courthouse that are leaking. We actually have hoses draining into sinks in the bathrooms um so that it doesn't, because we have the waters leaking out of those air handles. And so we, we've had that situation for a couple of years. We need to, we just need, they, they can't be welded, it's, we need to replace them. Um, you know, we, we've got to take care of our building, I'm, we can't just have water run in our building. So that's why Todd's got hoses connected to them, running into sinks and bathrooms. I mean, um, we just, we need to, we need to make those investments, in my opinion, to, to take care of that. So that building doesn't get compromised any further. Um, renovating a portion of the former board of education space for on a new elections office, um, replacing the 30-year-old um auditorium seating at the Aggreg Civic Center. Um, that's includes some seats and some concrete work where you're tearing up those old seats and have to put, you have to finish that off for the new seats can go down. Um, resealing and recaulked the fourth floor um exterior of the courthouse and also the whole south side facing um all floors of the south side facing portion of the courthouse, resealing and recaulked that whole building um so that water's not penetrating it. That south side just takes a beating from the sun. Um, it's, it, that caulk and um, you know, in between the bricks and the bricks and mortar, um, just the point up on that just, it gets, it gets, takes a beating. Um, we did this, gosh, probably 10, 12 years ago. And so it's held up for a good amount of time, but it's, it's time to do it again. Um, and then our just rising jail costs, um, and medical costs that, that just continues to go up. Um, for my capital outlay, things that were valued at a thousand to roughly $10,000, um, 21,000 was requested. I'm recommending that 21,000. On things that were $10,000 and greater on the capital side, um, to 7.2 million, almost 7.3 million was requested. I'm recommending 3.3 plus financing, one ambulance, one jail van and eight sheriff's office vehicles. Um, so we'll have some sheriff's office vehicles rolling off, off, off of payments. And we'll just replace these and same with the ambulance. We'll have an ambulance coming off, maybe two next year, and this one will take the, take its place. Um, and so that jail van, a jail van's fairly old. I mean, I think that, that, we've had to have that at least 10 years. Um, so um getting that updated um and updating the interior portion of it that transports the prisoners. Um, so I've got funding in the budget for the equipment, just recommending financing the actual vehicle. Uh, if you look at revenue, our investment earnings are projected to decrease slightly just due to forecasted declines in interest rates uh over the next 12 months. Um, sales tax is up, but that's really related to um some of that reserve 46 coming in. Um, so it's really just reserve money. Um, and um, our medic, we've been, we've been, we've been realizing of um anywhere from, gosh, over a million to $750,000 of Medicaid. Um, um, when the, when the state redid Medicaid, gosh, 2006, 2007, um, they changed the way the, the sales tax worked for counties and there was, the state took over Medicaid from the counties and there was a swap. And so for a long period of time, our county didn't get any relief from the state for Medicaid because our revenues went above that. But for the last five or six years, we've, we've brought in um, um, over a million a couple of times. And then I think this year was like 750,000. So we budgeted half a million um for that Medicaid uh for next year. Um, so that's really where that sales tax kind of come, sales tax increases. Just generally, if it wasn't for those reserves and that Medicaid, we'd, it'd be pretty flat um in terms of what we're seeing. Um, Advalorum uh is up 2.9 percentage points really related to the um revaluation. And then between Advalorum, sales tax and intergovernmental revenue, um, you're talking about 92% of our, all of our revenue. Um, really the fund balance and investment earnings and sales and um licenses and permits, those things really are very nominal in terms of our whole budget. Outside agency requests, uh, convention and business bureau, um, and by statute, we have a, we have a responsibility to fund them. Um, so this really, even though it's a request, we don't really have a whole lot of, um, we, we need, we have to fund them at, at, at a level and 35,000 is the right number um for, for the convention and visitors bureau. And then Homes of Hope asked for $10,000 to help with homeless. But to be honest with you, a lot of our opioid settlement programs are doing things with the homeless. Um, the um U R harm reduction and Will's Place and Christian recoveries and all of them are, are touching homeless population. And so I just feel like we, we need to leverage that instead of putting additional mo, general fund money in our budget to deal with homeless. Um, we were, we're dealing with them through other, other means. Um, recommended fee changes, I am recommending that the household solid waste fee. Now again, this isn't $2 a month, this is $2 a year. Go from 97 to 99. We haven't increased that, this would, um, the last two fiscal years, we haven't increased the solid waste fee. We've kept it alone, but just the inflationary increase in hauling is, is gotten us to a point where we need to bump that up a couple, a couple dollars. So um move it, recommending moving that from $97 a year to $99 a year. In my opinion, that's still a pretty, pretty good bargain for less than a hundred bucks to be able to take your trash to the convenience sites.
I was going to say, when I come on the board, it was $50.
I know, I, but the, the cost of hauling's gone up quite a bit since then too. And the, you know, and obviously the cost of our labor is also drives that as well. There's several fee recommendations, the Aggreg Civic Center, we've recommended some adjustments to those fees. EMS, health department planning and zoning inspections. You'll see the fee schedule's got highlights in it so you can really quickly identify where those uh changes are recommended. The volunteer fire districts, um, you can see the current rate, which for all, all of them, um, all of them, all of them, no, nobody, everyone of them wants their current rate, um, except for Ridgecrest. They actually, not, yes, Ridgecrest, they'd actually like to go up four cents from their current rate, from 11 to 15. I've shown you the revenue neutral rates um for each of these, and these, this is in the transmittal letter as well. So you'll see all this, uh, the revenue neutral rates for each of them, which I by statute have to show you what the revenue neutral rates are. And then I'm recommending that we keep the rates the same for the fire departments. And really that's just, one, the cost of their equipment continues to increase, radios. Um, there's a proposal from the state that if we want to be, if we're going to, if we're going to connect to Viper, even though we have our own radio system, we do have folks that use Viper, um, um, to just for the interoperability and the state's proposing to go, uh, charge a hundred dollar fee for every radio, volunteer fire burns, we'll have to pay that hundred dollar fee for every radio. Um, and so they, you know, things like that, just their equipment, their um, you know, their apparatus, the, the um, their, their protective gear continues to go up and escalate in price. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that if we do, if we, if we, if you do keep them the same, that we don't, they're not coming and asking for tax rate increases, you know, next year and the year after. I mean, some of, some, some of these increases, you know, they're, you know, a penny or two above revenue neutral. And so I think there's, you know, there, if you keep them the same, that's a, that's, you know, I think we're, that's a, I mean, that's a significant, in my opinion, that's a significant um, um, investment by this board in our volunteer fire departments and, and making sure that we have good fire, fire protection all over the county. And so um, that's, that's the um, the recommended rates to keep them the same. Obviously, I know there's going to be lots of discussion about that, um, and we can take a look at that. It just became really difficult because I do believe there are some departments that easily could go be roll back some. But then if I recommend rolling some back and don't roll back others, then it's like, well, why'd you do that? And not, not this department? So I just, I just made the decision, I'm just going to keep, just recommend them all stay the same. Um, but obviously there, we, there's lots of discussion to be had um before the adopted budget. Uh, with the utilities, I'm recommending a 5%, uh, was a 5% rate increase was requested, recommending a 5% rate increase. And if you look at our operating budget uh in utilities, um, you know, for the last two years, we've, we've been basically in the red. And so that, that's not sustainable. We've got to, we've got to, you know, our cost for um repairs and maintenance is just outpacing what we're bringing in in revenue. We really need to, to, to kind of write that. Um, and so I'm just requesting that we, we bump those rates up. Um, you know, the water rate, 5%, you'd go from a $30.60, uh, it would go to $30.60 for 2,000 gallons, 1544 after. With the sewer, 5% will make it 10 dollars and 73 uh per 1,000 gallons. Um, with the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant, we're actually, it was requested and recommending just a base rate of 3% on the wholesale. And that's really because our West Stanley wastewater treatment plant's doing better as a fund than our other, are just our general utility funds that are doing water and sewer. Um, the West Stanley treatment plant's in pretty good shape, but you know, having that 3% helps with additional debt service you're going to have coming on um here with the, with the new project. Greater Baden budget decreases about um 60,000, Pine Point going down about uh 3,300. Stanley Utilities going up almost a million dollars. Um, and then West Stanley wastewater treatment plant uh budget increase of about 239,018%. A lot of that's related to um just repairs, maintenance, that um, one of the big increases in the West Stanley, and I've, I've, I've outlined these in the transmittal letter. Um, one of the increases in that West Stanley one is not, in addition to repairs and maintenance is that um our contract with Syntagro that where we have to haul off the um, the sludge. I mean, that just continues to get more and more expensive every year. Um, and so that's in there. Airport, uh, 1.65 million dollar total budget, it's an increase of 128,000. The general fund will be contributing 485,000, that's a $57,000 increase. All those are tied to one-time capital improvement projects, 14%. Um, I think there's paving uh the old terminal parking lot, which has been deferred for a number of years. We really need to get that um done. Um, just some general improvements to the old terminal, um, some windows, um, resealing those. Um, there's some, a couple air, air, uh, HVACs um at the new terminal that need to be replaced. So that's really tied to that uh 57,000, uh, majority of all that um plus sum is, is capital. Um, on the 911 funds, the 2.7 million dollar uh budget, it's 100, 1.8 million dollar increase, which seems like a huge number, and it is because it's got the 2.4 million dollar grant for the new 911 EOC EM facility in it. That money couldn't be co-mingled with our other project funds, it has to be accounted for separately. Um, and so that, that 2.4 million dollar grant for the building is actually in our 911 fund. Just in, in brief, recommended to uh very close to revenue neutral tax rate, just three quarters of a penny over. Um, 51 cents, continuing to invest in education and workforce development, 719,000 dollar increase for our schools, an additional 600,000 for the ND school project, $4 million for capital outlay, 300, 3 and a half percent increase in Stanley Community College operational funding and additional 25,000 for their capital outlay. Um, replacing our mobile data terminals, all of them for our sheriff's office patrol vehicles. Those lease, one lease rolls off, we'll up, put a new lease in place. Um, eight sheriff's office vehicles and a jail van to replace one new ambulance, increased funding to enhance the redundancy of our 911 radio network, increased funding for courthouse repairs and renovations, additional contractual funding to offset staffing vacancies in DSS and health and human services, uh, employee retention, 3% COLA recommended and an increase to merit funding. Our budget calendar, just looking forward, June 2nd is the budget public hearing, your next regularly scheduled meeting. At that meeting, you will also set dates for your budget workshops. We're recommending at this point, June 5th and June 10th, but those are obviously open to you all in terms of your calendar. We'll work with you however, uh, and then budget adoption, we've tentatively, tentatively set for Tuesday, June 17th. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Chairman. Question from Mr. Lewis.
Comment.
I know you've got June tenth down as a possible date.
Yeah, I think we've got a, is that advocacy days?
Be tenth, eleventh, and Raleigh.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I put this together quite a long time ago, so I'm, yeah, we're flexible. It's a lot to digest, so I understand. Now, I know there'll be lots of conversations over the next month, so appreciate your time.
Thank you, Andy. Can't find my paper, but the consent agenda's up. Uh, I need uh someone to make a motion about it. Got a motion from Vice Chair King, in a second.
Second, sir.
Commissioner Eifert, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, seven oh. Now, we're up to a board member comments, announcements, and reports. Start from my left over here with Commissioner Mills.
I'm hungry. I, I don't have any comment right now.
Mr. Lahang?
No comment.
Mr. Eifert?
Yeah, I got about four pages of stuff I need to talk about. So hang on, Billy. Uh, no, just one thing. Um, April twenty-sixth, we held the Twenty-Sixth Annual Kerry D E for Memorial Scholarship Bike Run. It was a huge success. I want to thank everyone out for coming out. Um, we had a hundred and forty-eight motorcycles, we fed about four hundred and fifty people, um, and we raised a little over nineteen thousand dollars. So um, I want to give a big, huge shout out. Thank you, sir. Allen County Sheriff's Office, um, Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, Albemarle P D, Troy P D, for a safe ride, police escorted all the way through and, and just, I can't thank them enough for that. And we'll be giving out uh Thursday night at the West Stanley, the West Stanley High, they'll have their senior awards night, and this year we'll be giving out eight. Yep, eight scholarships to seniors at West Stanley, so, but thank y'all.
That's good. All right, uh, Mr. Crump, have anything?
Yes, I'd like to, um, I'd like to say thank you, Andy, to you and to all your department heads for all of the hard work you've put together. We do have plenty of homework to do now and lots of conversations. Um, and I also just want to say, uh, because we will not gather again um until June, apparently, but uh congratulations to all the graduates uh across the county. Uh, that's coming up, uh, not this Friday, but the next. I have a graduate myself, and um, good job on all the hard work.
Mr. Hadley?
Mr. King?
And I'm gonna not hang everybody around either, so uh, with all that, we appreciate everybody coming, and we'll adjourn the, our, not, excuse me, recess the meeting till May twenty-first, six P M for our joint meeting with the Stanley County Board of Education. Thank you.